...in 776 meeting of the College Place City Council called the meeting to order. Mr. Dickerson, would you please say our prayer and our pledge of allegiance?
Sure. Father, we thank you that we can gather here together and do the business of the city. We pray that you will guide us, be with us, give us open minds, give us patience with each other as we discuss the city's business, and we pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So now is the time for any public comments. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council, please step forward and state your name and address. Seeing no one, we have a consent agenda of approval of the agenda for today, minutes for January 24th, minutes for the council workshop of January 30th, approve the special council meeting minutes for January 30th, our banking resolution, and our EMS levy contract.
We approve the consent agenda.
Second. Ms. Nyhagen move to approve. Mr. Dickerson seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda passes unanimously. Moving on to action items. Ms. Stisel.
As you know, the past several meetings and workshops, we've discussed the board docs for the agenda pack preparation, and so I'm hoping that the workshop webinar that you now had answered any questions, and what we've got for you tonight is the actual contract. It would be a setup fee that's a one-time fee of $1,000, which would include them customizing it to our processes, and then a $3,000 annual fee for the operating system. Do you have any other questions that I can answer or hopefully try to answer?
Any questions for... Do I have a motion to approve?
I've moved the authorized listing of retailers for execution and you reserve the board docs.
It's been moved by Ms. Selvi. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Sherman. Any further discussion? Discussion. I injured my knee, not my mouth. Seeing that all in favor, please signify by saying aye. All of those same signs.
Just don't point your foot.
You know, I can't tell you what Motrin does, but it isn't supposed to affect this.
Thank you very much.
We will have that then.
We will get word out to them, and I think if I remember right, they said it takes a month or so to get it all customized to our format, and then we'll start working with them, and we will let you guys know as soon as we're ready for the training session.
I'm hoping by the first of April, we'll be set up and ready to go.
Cool. Thank you.
Mr. Ricard, Buxton contract.
Yes. So this is Agenda Bill 17029, and last month, the 24th meeting of January, Jacob Davis with Buxton came and presented the services that Buxton provides. We believe this is going to be a valuable asset for our business recruitment. It'll be a good tool for Michael when he goes to the Vegas conference in recruiting businesses to come, especially retailers in particular. It'll provide us with a lot of the needed data that are these businesses we're looking to recruit. Jacob is here tonight if we had any additional questions. The contract is a three-year contract. It's a $150,000 commitment, so $50,000 a year for the next three years. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them, or Jacob is also here.
Ms. Selvi.
I have a question. I'm sorry I wasn't here last time when we talked about this, but in reading over the contract, it looks like it focuses on what I would call like chain businesses that are sort of everywhere, and one of the things I do appreciate about College Place is that we don't, we haven't turned into anywhere USA. So can, I guess I might have two questions. One, can we use this data also to reach out to people who are like locally in Washington, or people trying to start their first business, and will we be doing that in addition to focusing on trying to get chains here?
I believe we can. Jacob, if you wouldn't mind coming up and kind of...
Hi.
Jacob Davis with Buxton. That's another good question, and yes, I'm sure we can do that. So if there's something more regional that you want to look at, some of that might be just located in Washington, we can definitely look at analytics for that. It would be a good fit for here. We also provide local business retention information that's accessible through our software platform that we give to you. You build full information that helps the local business understand who the consumers are a little bit more here, what type of brand preferences they have, how to market to them. So you can sit local businesses in that area, help them to understand if their concept might be a good fit here. You know, if there is something that we provide in the matches that Mike sees and says, hey, you know, we actually have a local entrepreneur that's wanting to do something like this, that can also be your groundwork right there. And we've done that for communities before, where we saw that there would be a fit for one example, I can take the particular Starbucks community that didn't want to bring Starbucks in there because it was a big national brand, so they took that information to the local entrepreneur instead and opened a coffee shop there.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Counselor Monbet, please.
I'd kind of like to echo the, I've always appreciated the small town feeling and vibe that would prioritize smaller chains and smaller businesses. Like I'd rather have something like a spaghetti factory, which is somewhat northwest, rather than something that's like everywhere around the US, like an Olive Garden. So I would echo that, but also I'm curious about, is my understanding that for three years, we'll be actively providing this data and seeking out, presenting it to potential businesses?
Actually, what we're going to do is provide you the set of 20 matches each year. So we're going to make the initial reach out to those, to the key decision-makers of that concept. So the yes or no person, we'll let them know that we validated College Place is a good area for them to grow the brand into. From there, they'll expect a follow-up call from, I guess Mike will be that key person that will do that. We'll guide them through that entire process. We don't want to take you out of that process, so do everything, because they don't want to deal with the third part the whole time. They want to make sure that the person that can get them is taken care of. If they need additional sidewalk cuts, that's going to be the city to call to place, so we won't do anything about that. So they're going to want you involved in that entire process. But you'll have a project manager that's an expert in retail that'll work alongside them the entire time. He'll be there to join them on conference calls. He'll be at in-person meetings, when they go to the conference, as you mentioned earlier. He'll actually be able to set up meetings with those retailers at our booth. He'll coordinate that with his project manager after in-person meetings. So we're basically as an extension staff.
So it's kind of like this massive statistical analysis of, I mean, it's saying, I'm working short, plus the recruitment, trying to attract people, showing what the positive features we have. Aside from you saying 20 contacts each year, trying to find to attract and discussing with us, is there anything that we have after this, where years have elapsed, that these statistics we collected, do we own that? Is there something you hold on to, and if so, like how long will the statistics and this information be valid for?
Well, it really depends on what type of data that you're pulling out of there, how long it's going to be valid, but anything that you pull out, you can keep. We're not going to ask you back, ask for back or anything like that. All those pursuit packages and your personal information will be in there. It really depends on the shifts in your community and who that particular retailer is, how long that's going to be valid. A lot of retailers, you know, if, say, if you took something and you didn't utilize it when we've given it to you, within that year period or so, or maybe it might take a little bit longer, that retailer might not see it as a big value condition for me anymore. They'd want you to update that. But that's why we have the project manager there to work alongside you and make sure that you're utilizing it while it is valid, that our information's updated every eight weeks, except for certain data sets that just can't be updated that quickly.
Ms. Peters, and then Ms. Sherman.
This is a three-year commitment or agreement. How would you measure, at the end of three years, that it would be, you could call it successful? How would you define success?
Well, for me, by your third year. You'd have some retos here. First year, second year, depending on who those retos are, the best match, how far they're actually looking out for their plans to go vertical, in other words, have, start their building or move into that office, wherever it might be. You might just be still in initial discussions of it. Sometimes it can take quite a while, depending on who that retailer is, but by your third year, I'd say success would be to have those discussions that you started in year one, year two, starting to go vertical. I would expect that some of those discussions that you're starting out at the beginning of year one, starting to go vertical somewhere in year two.
Good.
Ms. Sherman.
I'm still a little concerned over the city of College Place taking that whole expense when it's, the information that we're getting sounds like it's going to be kind of including Walla Walla, which means if we, and the fact that we're so close that we bring someone in, I know that we don't have control over where we go, but I'm wondering why we're putting all the money into it if potentially Walla Walla or County would not have the problem with that. That's my only concern. I think it'd be great.
Well, I can't speak to what Walla Walla does, but I'm sure that they are reaching out to companies as well to deal with that, and this just gives us the ability to say, here's our catchment area, which, you know, that Western Athena to Dayton kind of look at what we are, and then what makes it attractive for us, you know, to take a less than 10,000 population and say, here's, here we are, you know, let's attract somebody, and here's much less attractive than saying, we've got 60,000 people in an area that can provide, that can provide you with a customer base to do business.
And just because, I just wanted to add a little bit, just because Walla Walla isn't part of that trade area, doesn't mean they have that space for them to move into either. We're going to be marketing your community, not Walla Walla. It's just so that there's consumers that could also come from that far out there. So, you know, I don't pick Walla Walla, I want to pay for the option if you have some of the leftovers anymore. Just joking.
Mr. Dickerson.
Yeah, I want to, excuse me, echo Heather's concern. I mentioned to Laura last time you were here that it seems like there should be an alternative to have a joint effort here between communities that could help pay for each other, because as businesses become aware that there's places available, and they'll be looking next door to and across the border and so forth, you know, to see, well, this is a pretty fine, interesting area, would be nice to. So just to give you a little historical perspective, I've been on council for about 17 years, and seen a lot of property get rezoned and developed, and I've understood the process of how we recruit businesses here. I've seen a lot of good, big businesses come this close, and not necessarily through our own efforts of recruitment, but that's kind of a joint thing that we do with property owners. So my question to you is, are you aware of what property owners want? Because they do their own recruiting, and I think they're going to be really fascinated to learn that we're doing their recruiting for them.
That's a good question, yeah. A lot of, a lot of property owners, brokers, stuff like that, they are going to be trying to do their own recruiting based on what past relationships they might have. It's not really analytic-based, it might have some demographic information available to them, but that's why you might have seen success in the past.
For instance, we have one large owner that brought us a plan of a mall, and he was working on it, and he'd spent a lot of money on recruitment, but if you find somebody like a big box, you know, for instance, that, you know, we know it's not going to be Costco, we know it's not going to be Target, because we've gone through all the recruiting with those kind of interesting places already, and they've come this close to analyzing it, and the big boys come in and looked at it and said, you don't have the population, you don't have the traffic, you don't have the right location. Yeah, so kind of address that a little bit.
Well, for the property owners, if we're giving them more options, so we're giving them more people to actually be looking at their spots, so this is actually very good for them. As those companies you were talking about that came this close, you said you're actually analyzing the community, so they, you might actually be a good fit, but at first glance, when they're looking at it, this is not enough population. So we have to show them that there are enough consumers. We're actually going to run through, again, look at those same companies that had looked at you before, and see if they really are a good fit. And if they are, we're going to provide you with that information that will give them that final push to come through. We've found a few different communities where they've talked to someone like Target or Costco, someone like that, and they were denied that in the very beginning. We came back and were able to actually present those analytics, put them in the person's hand of that city, and they're able to show that company that they are actually a good fit, bring them in. But for your property owners, I think they'd be happy to see that an additional prospect for them, more options.
Counselor Bobbitt.
Yeah, the question in my mind is return on investment.
Yes.
For the city of College Place, what do you see as that return, let's see, you know, in three years, for your initial contract for, and would you see a break even for that?
Well, at the top of my head, I can't remember how it was, sales tax you get back, but it's going to be mainly based on your sales tax. So if you're running something like a Chick-fil-A that usually does over $3 million a year, you're probably going to see a pretty quick return on investment. There's also commercial property tax that they receive from that as well. So imagine just a, you know, a big box will be your return on investment for you. A couple of smaller boxes will be able to take care of that as well. We're planning on doing a lot more of that though, so if you have 20 matches per year, let's imagine if you can just get two per year out of that.
Real quickly, I think you explained this last time, and I apologize. You're doing a lot of this analytics, and we will get the data. Your participation, though, in contacting and discussion with these businesses, where does that stop and start? You know, this is a small town, we don't have an economic development department with 25 people in it or something, you know, I'm just, you know, time to take care of it, but I just, so your support with talking to these individuals, once again, goes how far up to actually meeting with them, with the city, or what is your role there?
Well, there's a project manager that's assigned to your community the entire time. So they're going to be in contact with Mike weekly, on a weekly basis. If he coordinates a conference call, which is mainly what it's going to be in the very beginning, before they come out for a site visit, they can coordinate that with their project manager, have them on the call. They're going to be best at validating the community, Mike will be the best at marketing the community. So it has to be a joint effort for...
Sure, sure. Right.
But anytime, anytime you need them, they're there, they're available, they've been over backwards for it, always encourage, and they'll tell you the same thing, utilize them as much as possible. Those conferences, they will be available for in-person meetings. They'll actually come out here midway through the year, each year of the partnership, and address the council, and let you know how far they've come, what to expect moving forward. They're going to make sure that all stakeholders know what's going on throughout the entire partnership. If everyone here wants to be there at the beginning of discussion, you're able to do that as well. They're actually going to reach out to you within a couple hours of execution of the contract, and they're going to set up a conference call. They're going to go over all the needs of the community, the wish list, what available spots you have, if you're going to expect a redevelopment or new development here, whatever it might be. They're going to get those questions answered at the beginning of the call. They're actually going to review each matches with Mike as well, so if they look at it and say, hey, that's too big for the national brand, we don't want, we want something a little more regional, they can push that out. So they're welcome to the entire process. If you need help with something on scout, they're available for that. If you just have some question, like what kind of information can we pull together for this industrial company over here that might be available on scout, they'll help you out with that. It's really just, anything you have a question about that analytics might be able to solve, ask them, they might be able to, even if it's beyond retail approval.
Okay, thank you.
Another question. Mr. Cleveland, and then Mr. Dickerson.
I guess I was kind of thinking after a couple of council meetings, you have the question that it seems like, you know, this is an investment that we make, that we're considering making, that may potentially benefit our neighbors rather than us. Where we would do the research, we'd get the contacts, and they'd say, oh, this looks, sounds great, and then they'd kind of take a look around and say, is there a more appropriate location that might be better suited? So I think there's an assumed risk that that could happen. Is that something that you, that's kind of expected to some degree, that you see this sort of thing happen?
That's pretty unlikely. We're marketing your community, they're in contact with you, and what really makes Walla Walla better, when you have the citizens right here too. So we're matching for a retailer where they're going to have the strongest consumers building outwards, not outwards in. So College Place is where their primary consumers are going to be, not necessarily Walla Walla, Walla Walla's consumers, but their secondary, tertiary may be further out into Walla Walla, well beyond. But there's really no reason for a retailer to think that Walla Walla is going to be better just because within their political boundaries, they have more citizens. They're concerned about the dry time trade area, how long it's going to take them to travel in order to consume certain goods, just inconvenience. So it doesn't necessarily, the political boundaries really don't mean that much to them when it comes to how many consumers they have in a particular area, and that's what we're trying to provide to them.
Mr. Dickerson.
I guess my question would be for John. Where's the money? Where do we get this kind of money to spend? I didn't know we had this kind of money. What fund would it come out of to pay for this?
Actually, I think that's probably more a question for...
It's current expense.
Do we have an economic development fund that can share or come partly out? I don't understand exactly.
So it's actually going to be funded out of current expense, and we have, we have a reserve balanced in the current expense fund that's, it's there to use on basically whatever, I mean, it's above and beyond our reserve of the 20% of...
CE is fine, I understand.
So we have some money set aside that has no purpose, other than what you all decide to do with it.
And how much is that?
I think it's around half a million right now.
Yeah, okay.
So this was budgeted basically as a one-time expense of over the three years to come out of that, basically that money that isn't earmarked for anything else.
Okay, thanks.
Also, one point out real fast, that you do have the ability to evaluate each year, so if there's something that you find wrong with what we're doing, you don't like it, or something happens to your budget, you do have the ability to opt out maybe. It's a 10% fee after that.
Mayor, I would move to approve the contract with Buxton, the amount of $50,000 annually for three years.
It's been moved to approve the contract. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Nyhagen. Any further discussion?
Yeah, we are getting some financial analysis of projecting, you know, like I was asking about, return on investment.
Well, I think, I think the only way to look at that would be to look at that over the first couple of years of, to do it prospectively over the contract. I'd hate to try and compare another city to say, this is what they did, since we're so, you know, each of us is going to be an independent.
I would just add, too, we don't know what the future holds. If, you know, we don't know what the national economy is going to do, we don't know what the regional economy is going to do, and, you know, I think I've heard with some of the invest, the amounts that come in for Walmart, and, you know, obviously that's a much larger enterprise than maybe we're talking about here, but, yeah, once again, this would be a very quick payback, even if it's a couple of businesses, if I understand this correctly.
Jerry, just getting one big box store would pay for all three years of the contract within the first year. So if we can get two businesses a year, I mean, it would probably both be big box stores, but it will pay for itself if we're successful.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion?
I was going to say, if you would like, we could add to that, you know, down the road, the Tri-Cities area, back when we partnered with them, it's been a few years, but they saw, I think it was Kennewick, that 11% tax revenue increase after they worked with them, and there's still those 9% tax revenue increase. So there, there's always a good return on investment. Thank you.
Mr. Dickerson.
I'm probably not going to support this, but I do want to say, I do support recruitment and economic development, and after learning that it's coming out of CE, I kind of, there's a lot of other things we need to fix, you know, right now. I know that just one store wouldn't fix it, you know, and so forth. Not sure this is the right time right now, so.
Any further discussion? All in favor of Bill 17029, approving a three-year contract for $50,000, you're at Buxton, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
No. We have 5 for, 2 against. The motion passes. Fourth Street Academy Way, transportation infrastructure, gas tax agreement. Mr. Gordon.
Thank you.
And I will note that there is an insert into the agenda packet.
Yeah, the one you originally got in your agendas was fill in the blanks, and that was not intentional, so I filled in the blanks and you got it in front of you.
Oh, I filled in what I thought it should be.
Do you feel free to share those?
They're like $5.
Okay, let me see if I can get a start here. Actually, we do have quite a few on the agenda tonight, and I actually owe a thank you to the mayor for taking one of them that would have been on there off, and also the last one that I was going to present tonight, I believe it's still on your agenda, AG 17043 has also been struck. They requested that we hold off another meeting tonight, so that will not be presented tonight. So with that said, I have only one PowerPoint tonight that covers all of them, okay? So we're going to go through them sequentially. I don't think it'll take a lot of time to go through them, and I do need to express my appreciation to the rest of the staff in helping us get this together, including the city attorney, and Sarah, and the mayor, and Mike, who's not here right now, so.
So we'll go through each of the agenda bills and then have the council vote, and move on to the next.
Exactly. No, we're not going to ask you to wait till the last to do all of them. Just do them sequentially, just one PowerPoint, okay? Let's go ahead and get started. The first one we have tonight is the Fourth Street Academy Way TIB gas tax agreement. You may know this by another name, the West Side School District Sidewalk Project, as it was variously known about two, three years ago. We have received funding for this particular project. Many of you are aware of the fact that we've been working on, this is the university gym, just picture bearings here, this is Fourth Street, and this is Academy Way with Walla Walla Academy and Rogers, and we have been looking at somehow the sidewalk, as you know, there's a lot of traffic between the schools and the gym, and so a couple years ago, we were successful in getting about $150,000 in federal funding. A year later, we got another $100,000, so about a quarter of a million dollars for sidewalks. And then last year, or I should say, this most recent TIP funding cycle, we were successful in getting funding for overlaying the entire thing. So our preference would be to do a full project, okay? So our preference would be to do a full project, okay? Not just an overlay, not just a sidewalk. And, but what we have before us tonight is acceptance of the gas tax agreement that goes along with accepting the funds from TIB for the overlay. So let's go through that just a little bit here. Okay? The overlay is fully funded now, so we have enough money to go ahead and lay down asphalt. Normally, you would grind an overlay. This road here is so thin, we don't think we can grind, so we're just going to overlay it double time. I believe a lot of this was oiled road surface originally, and we've just been building it up over time. So there's not much there, there's no utility work here, it's just road and sidewalks. We're going to get around to it. This was our, one of our applications, we've put out several applications to Washita, we've not been successful yet. We do have that $250,000 for the whole project on sidewalks, but the whole cost of this project for the sidewalks is actually closer to $600,000 for Fourth Street and $370,000, almost a million dollars all the way through here. I should explain that this project has grown, so it was originally just a sidewalk project on Fourth Street, and so Councilman Peterson remembers it. Then it became a sidewalk project for both streets, and then it became, well, why don't we do the whole thing? And then it became overlay project as well. So we have actually split it in two and kept it that way for funding purposes, because some of our pots, like TIB's arterial preservation program, is just for the overlay. And so it's actually two projects, it's really just one, but it's two. In this case, we're looking at just the sidewalk component. And again, we have about a quarter of a million dollars in federal TAF funding, it would cover the whole thing. And we still have left with about $670-some thousand unfunded. So where do we go from here? We have the option, since we have, if you folks, if council sees fit to go ahead and accept this, the monies for the overlay, we can get started this year. But if we do that, that means we've got to go out later and cut that overlay and then fit our sidewalk up next again, up against it. And there's two mobilization costs, and it's just a lot of extra costs. So if we do all the project at once, we would prefer to do that. So one of the things we're going to be asking tonight, if you're okay with going ahead and deferring that project until 2018. Here's our funding options for the sidewalk component. Remember, the overlay is already completely paid for through this grant that we couldn't, that you have the option of accepting tonight. But what's left, I want to give you the bigger picture, is we have the sidewalks here. What we're looking at right now is a 12-foot shared use lane, bicycle and parking on the north side. On the south side will be just a five-foot bike lane. Bike lane would continue all the way up Academy Way to our multi-use path on Whitman, and it would have bike lanes on both sides, okay? And there would be ADA improvements along here. So what we can do, I talked to TIB, and they suggested, they said, look, why don't you go ahead and put in an application for what they call a UAP, or Urban Arterial Program Grant? That's a massive, major grant that we would apply for. And it would cover not just the overlay, but plus the sidewalks. And then we would return the sidewalk, the overlay money that we have, that you would be approving tonight. So in other words, give us back that money, we'll give you the money for the whole thing. They said that's one option for us, and they would consider that. Another option they considered was, well, why don't you also just apply for the sidewalks? So you already have the overlay money, why don't you apply for the sidewalks in addition? This gives them flexibility in how they move their funds around in their different programs. So they suggested we look at that for this coming TIB funding cycle. The third option is, if none of those pan out, what do we do? Well, we can still do the overlay, we've got that, and we've got a quarter of a million dollars for one part of the project. I've talked to our funding agency, the Walla Valley MPO, that handles the federal funds, and they're okay if we take all $250,000 and throw it at Fourth Street, okay? That still leaves us shy maybe 304, I mean, there's still some money that we'd have to come up with to make that project work. So we could do that if we had to. The preference would be to go ahead and fund the whole thing through one big grant, return this money, or possibly go out for another sidewalk grant and use this existing grant that you have the option of approving tonight, plus future sidewalk money to make the program work. So we have about three different options moving forward. I know that's not altogether clear, but what it means is the money is dribbling into the till for this project. The other part of the dynamic that's occurring is that Homestead Acres out here with all the home development that's going in, they have a requirement to put an emergency access road through here. So part of the discussion on what we do here is being, what should I say, affected a little bit by how we, they're not really excited about punching a collector through here, so we're talking to the university about options. But in that, in that discussion, we're also talking to them of what they, what do they really want to see happen along this corridor? Do they want streetlights? Do they want to separate the sidewalk? At what level are they willing to partner with us in the project? So if we can get them to partner in this project, there may be also some funds for this improvement coming out of the university. I don't want to, absolutely don't want to speak for them. It would probably come in the form of something like additional elements to the project, like maybe wider sidewalks, I would guess. But, so there's an option there for some partnering. So long story short, we would recommend to staff, accepting this award tonight, authorizing staff to sign the gas agreement, and deferring the project until next year.
Can you go back one slide? I'm sorry. Your comment that we're short 304, 391 there, that would include the sidewalks on Academy Way, is that what you're saying, the 304?
No, that would just be a Fourth Street thing.
Just Fourth Street.
We'd still be out that much.
I see, okay.
Okay? And I should mention here, too, is when these numbers here do not reflect any local contribution. So when we do get those grants, normally we're required, typically we throw 20% in. So 20% of these numbers would still be local. It's a significant project.
Councilmember Selby.
I have a couple of questions. One, how long does this TIB funding last? And is there a requirement that we spend it within a certain length of time?
That's a very good question. The award that we are receiving tonight, we'd have to be under contract by June of next year for this to work. Or it might be in jeopardy, it's not absolute. If you're making progress, usually they give you more time, and you can ask for more time. The beauty of going for one major new grant and returning this money is it pushes us out another year, so that'd be to our advantage.
And then, secondly, the federal funds, there's been a lot of angst over EPA has had to pull back federal grants because it freezes. Is that, any of that affecting the potential of these federal funds?
I have not heard anything to that effect, not for the transportation side, not yet. That doesn't mean there may be-
I haven't heard about transportation either, but-
Yeah. I've heard of maybe even a little bit the other side, that possibly the administration is funding more of the transportation, but I don't know at this point.
Mr. Dickerson.
So I'm all in favor of this, and, you know, fixing up roads, receiving grants and so forth. What I need to know for sure, and I learned my lesson last time, you know, is I need to ask the questions first, so bear with me. Does receiving a grant like this restrict us to any particular configuration? You're mentioning all kinds of possibilities here.
I would say yes, because we've already gone forward with our grant applications. I don't think the overlay does necessarily, because we can still stripe it differently, but we only have so much right of way, and we're pushing our sidewalks right out to the edge. And so the difference between that is really just how do we stripe in between? But what we have shown, at least on the sidewalk component, we're not accepting the sidewalk monies tonight, we're just doing the overlay. But that particular part of the project does show a 12-foot wide shared use lane for bikes and parking on the north side.
One side.
On one side, yeah. The parking law here will go away, okay? We have, we are working with the university about the possibility of keeping some ADA parking, they have a real challenge with that in this area. And to be honest, our conversation with the university is not just limited to this and this area out here, that's also limited to all these other areas throughout here. So that's a bigger discussion, I just mention it because it does kind of flavor how we move forward with this project, too.
Yeah, and so I like to look at the configuration, did we have that, or do you have that?
I don't know if I have it on here, let me check and see, I don't think I do. No, I don't. But I can tell you what it looks like, it's basically two lanes.
Okay, what's the overall width?
I think we are about, I don't remember precisely, but I'm guessing it's going to be about 45 or so, we're normally 36, so it's a little wider than a normal street. Because 12 feet of that will be-
And what's Fourth Street on the east side of the avenue of?
On the east side?
Yeah. Or part of the west? Is it kind of a continuation of the same width?
It will be a continuation for the most part, yeah.
Of the same width?
Yeah, yeah. It might be off a floor, too, but it should be close.
And that's curb to curb, and the sidewalk, the bike path will be up and-
No, the bike path is in the street right now.
Oh, it's in that 45?
In the street, that's why it's wired.
Ah.
Yeah.
So is there any chance of getting some more details on street width and lane and widths and parking and so forth?
We can bring that to you, in fact-
So I want that noted in the minutes, that we're restricted to a certain configuration if we accept this grant.
I'm not sure that's accurate, really. I think when on overlay, they just look at the width.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the overall-
The overall project.
Yeah.
Yeah, and those monies would be awarded on a different grant, so, yeah. But we can certainly bring that information back to you. I guess I would recommend to staff that we go ahead and accept these monies now for the overlay.
Sure.
Just because they've been kind of precedent性的.
Sure.
Good questions.
If you could go back one slide to the map here, to the map, where it happens to be.
Right there.
You mentioned something about kind of how this project might affect a continuation of Fourth Street over to our new development over there. And I don't exactly have a specific question regarding that, but I was wondering if you could maybe elaborate a little bit about how this project might affect future road going in that direction.
Sure. It won't really affect it, it just, this is an improvement, and if we're going to punch this through, it'll be an extension of this improvement. And it really is more of a question for the university in terms of how they want to partner outside of our right of way, I would assume, as they look forward to what they want to do down here. Now, the reality is, from what we've heard, they're not too excited about that, no, the schools aren't, there's a lot of traffic on there already at certain times during the day, so we're looking at alternatives. The biggest impact would probably be just this corner here, because that's where it would tie in. That would be the biggest nexus between the two.
The university is not at all in favor, just come right out and say it, the university does not want to put four through because they're concerned about the amount of traffic.
Exactly.
Did that, Ms. Selby?
I have a comment and a question. And my comment is, it seems to me that that would be a perfect place for a walking bike trail, because those can be emergency access. You know, you put the post in the middle that the fire department has a key to, and they can drive down if nobody else can. So, I mean, just a thought. But my question is, I'm still puzzling over the shared parking and bike lane, I don't see how parking and bikes are compatible. Could you talk a little bit more about that?
Well, it depends, and if the door's open at the time you drive by. And so, yeah, it's a standard configuration, you just make for a wider parking area with enough, I think we got 12 feet as opposed to just eight, so you have another four feet outside of where you would normally park. But you're right, it does introduce some concern, the problem is, is that we have a lot of parking needs along that, and actually, we have a lot of parking in the whole area. And the university, of course, is likewise concerned about what are they going to do with the folks that have been doing the 90-degree parking that rolls back out of the right of way. They're aware of it, and I can tell from what I, everything I can tell, they're okay with going this route, they just need to start planning, because there's a huge need for parking in this area.
Seeing no other questions, is there a motion?
So they need this, right?
Yes.
I move we approve the acceptance of the TIB Preservation Program grant funds for the Fourth Street and the Academy Way overlay project, and authorize the administration to execute the Washington State TIB fuel tax agreement.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Sorry.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Mr. Dickerson.
So the motion is for, how much is in the grant?
289, something like that, it's, is that close?
289, 57. Okay, I just wanted to make, I saw-
Just for the overlay.
Wanted to make sure that's the one that was, that we're accepting tonight, not one we've done before, okay?
That's correct.
Okay, and, let's see, what was the other? I forget.
Just give a bit to part two, authorizing the ministry to execute the Washington State fuel tax agreement. Could you just talk a bit about that?
Yeah, their monies come out of the fuel tax funds, and they want to make sure if we buy land and sell the land again, the money goes back to the right location it came from. Or if we were to use, that we don't use it for other purposes, that it is transportation restricted, so that's essentially what they're asking us to do.
I remember the other half. What's our match?
I think it's 10% on this, so you'd have to add, it's 10% of that total, and I'm having a rough hand, so.
There's another question?
We share.
Seeing no further, all in favor of Agenda Bill 17037, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes your answer. Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Next.
Thank you. Moving on to the next Agenda Bill, AB 17038. I'm presenting these on behalf of our city administrator, he is, again, I just want to emphasize, he's very astute when it comes to finding monies that are out there, low-hanging monies, and the Community Economic Revitalization Board, this year, is not going to receive any more funding from the legislature, we just learned last week. So they're kind of sitting out there with that in funds, and actually, they're not a well-known funding agency, and they do have what are called planning funds, and they will plan up to $50,000, they'll offer $50,000 in these grants for planning purposes. The community has to match that with 25%. So if you add that all together, the projects we're looking at, if we were to get a whole $50,000 and put our 25% in, it's about $66,000, $67,000. So it's a good chunk of money to get started on some planning purposes. So he's identified two. The first one, we've tried to get funding before, and we used to call it, we call it the HUB project, it's probably a bad term. We're trying to kind of leverage our use of the word cars, you know, some kind of a cute little acronym. But these are really commercial hubs that we're talking about. This is Home Depot area, and we have Whitman Crossing Development going in here, in fact, we'll talk about that tonight a little bit. And we got a lot of traffic that falls through here, all the way down to Walmart, a lot of traffic coming through here, we expect to see a lot of traffic coming through here. We've heard complaints, obviously, on this intersection quite frequently, in terms of this angle right here, right near the church. And we've also heard, eh, occasionally complaints up here, although there's also some folks who don't really want to see this punched through because it won't freeze traffic, so it's not all just one voice we're hearing there. And then we're also, well, let me go through this, the application tonight before you is we're just requesting the authorization to apply for the money. And we have to have it by resolution. SERV requires that we have a resolution from you saying that you support what we're going to be applying for. That's what we're doing, we're just asking for that resolution and support.
Good.
Okay, and then, the old project that we were talking about, the HUB project, was back in 2014. The total cost for just these two intersections, we had an early estimate, it's kind of a planning estimate, I adjusted it for $2,018. We're looking about $2.3 million, that's planning and going through all the process, the building, the construction. To be honest, hopefully it'd be less than that, but there'll probably be some right-of-way acquisition associated with it, too, so. Those are initial estimates. And then there's this third one here, Whitman, coming through. Actually, I have this in the wrong place, it's up here, okay? I apologize. The Whitman intersection is also an area that we have looked at and anticipated we'd be having some problems with traffic over the long term. And in fact, I just got a call on it last week, and I was able to mention that, we've been bringing it forward to you this evening. This was the old, what we're going to call Costco site, so obviously, this would have an impacted intersection, again, I'm sorry, this should have been up here. So if the funds that we receive allow for also including that in the analysis, because we have a lot of common traffic analysis up and down the corridor, we would include that as part of the study. we would include that as part of the study. Just want to let you folks know that, that's one of the things we would also be looking for. And here again is the northern C Street, Larch Avenue hub, as it were, that we would like to address. We have Lambert Avenue right now is just one way coming south. We would open that up to go two-way to two-way traffic, that is a federally classified collector now, so we are looking at eventually improving that to two-way traffic. And we have this kind of different configuration here that we'd like to wrap into that. So it's a, that's the one to the north. One to the south, this is where the church is, and this is where we have this bend in 12th Street, causes lots of issues. As you know, this is a well-traveled route down to Walmart, and we're also at the edge of a hill right here, so it makes it a little more complicated in terms of folks' access in that area. And then this is the intersection on Whitman, and right now, we have two stops, east and west, with a continuous traffic north and south. And that would be the other one we'd want to look at, apparently, and I don't have data for this right now, we're getting quite a bit of backup here during the morning hours going to work in particular. Any questions, really, again, this is?
So I'm a little confused on the money, is, you said they're not getting any more money, so this is just applying for the spend down of what they have?
This is a residual, this is what they have up in their coffers. Amike is anxious to be able to make a call for it.
Yeah, it's, this is basically asking your permission to ask them for money.
Right.
I'll ask the same question again, does the acceptance of the grant restrict us to a certain configuration?
There is no configuration right now, at all.
So it doesn't have to be what you call a hub and what I call a roundabout?
Well, you know, it may not be a roundabout, it depends on what they decide in terms of, at some level, your input is.
Okay, so that leads to the next question, haven't we done a study on that before and we got the results?
We have some studies on it, it's not very.
And I'm especially thinking of C and Larch.
Yeah, we have some data, and a lot of it's associated with some of the other projects. We, I always try to include that intersection when they're doing TIA's, so we get more information, so we have some of that. But we haven't really done a comprehensive look at the redesign of that intersection. If you recall, we were thinking about that when we were doing the C Street project, and then we pulled it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this would be going back again and taking a real close look to see what can we do, and what should we do, and what do we want to do there.
Is there a problem there, though, is there? Because hubs and roundabouts are meant to relieve traffic, not create it. And so if we create a backup by slowing everybody down from 30, isn't it going to create a situation that we're not really wanting?
That's what we would find out.
Didn't we find that out already?
I don't believe we have.
You came back to us and said the numbers, the engineers said the numbers didn't support the?
Not right now, right, and that was in the case of the C Street that we looked at before, and you're correct, they said they could pull that out safely.
Yeah.
What we're looking at now is the long term, we have 50,000, if we can get $50,000 and throw in some of our own dollars, what can we do now to look at those for the future and be ready if funding were to come along? And, and we get the traffic at the level we need to address it. My concern really is just that it's just kind of a different kind of an intersection, not that difference wrong, but it's, I think we can suck a little bit more traffic through College Avenue too, and some of those businesses by improving that intersection. Again, some folks are not too hip on that idea because it means more traffic to the neighborhood. So there's, there's some policy issues there that you folks will need to crack.
Yeah, I just thought we spent a couple hundred thousand dollars already fixing that intersection.
Well, we redid the align, the curves at one little area there in the center, I don't think it was a couple hundred thousand, I can try and find out what we spent on it.
Yeah, this will be the third design.
I know it was designed before I joined the city, and maybe that's what they're thinking of, but there hasn't been significant redesign since then.
Other questions? Is there a motion?
I move the City Council approve the resolution authorizing and supporting the curb grant application for preliminary planning and design improvements to our avenue intersections associated with commercial activity.
I have a second.
It's been seconded, moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Mr. Cleveland, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Passes unanimously, unanimously. I'm not taking any motoring ever again. Agenda Bill 17039, the West Side Tank.
Okay, this is exactly almost the same thing, over again, just different application. We have a West Side Tank that in the future, we're planning to put on the West Side. This is a water tank, one that'll help supply areas to the west as the city continues to expand. We do not have an absolute immediate need for it right now, it is not in the water, it's not factored into the water rates, as I recall, it was removed because it didn't look like an immediate need. But if we can plan for it, and if we can anticipate locations where it might go, it would behoove us now to know where it would be, where we want to put it. Because we can negotiate with the landowners or with developers and so forth, and we can be prepared. When the time comes, we can have the land, we can know what we're going to do. So, this again, $50,000 grant request, or I should say, resolution on your part, supporting our application for that $50,000. This is a picture out of our water system plan update, F1 is really the improvement areas they identified to date. There's also one, let's see if I can find it here. I think I'm overlapping it a little bit. Right here is another one we might be looking at. This is the last few phases of the Homestead Development, and as they start to run the roads through here, we may be looking at some of their areas too as a good site for a well, I'm sorry, not for a tank. So this, this study will give us $50,000 to work with, in terms of deciding what should we do, what size lines do we need, doing some preliminary cost estimates, and so forth.
Questions for Mr. Gordon, Mr. Cleveland?
Water tanks aren't exactly the most attractive site in the future of the city. As part of this planning phase, do you suppose we could incorporate some perhaps natural camouflage? Perhaps a three-barrier is part of our strategy for getting this place some?
I know Paul Hartwig, we're here tonight, he would disagree with you on the water tower, I think he thinks they're beautiful.
No accounting for taste.
But certainly we can, I mean, certainly we could look at something like that, yes. In fact, you may not have the history, but our current water tanks over there near Whitman Drive were repainted on account of an aesthetic concern, so.
That's kind of one of the things I was keeping in mind here is, you know, while some people do enjoy the sites of different types of things, others find them less enjoyable, so. Just if you only had some sort of contingency plan, depending on what the councils will assign for the project and what they're doing here.
And there are different shapes to water towers, you can get your large column cylinders, you can get your fluided veins, there's lots of ways we can make it look different.
Ancient period.
Well, and also, if we look farther in advance, and we can get a hill, you can, it doesn't have to be a big tall thing up above.
Right.
So, there's, like Olympia has one, that's like a third barrier, you hardly even notice it until you like stumble over it, like literally.
Other questions?
I move the City Council approve resolution authorizing and supporting Community Economic Revitalization Board application for the preliminary planning and design of the West Side Tank.
It's been moved, it's been seconded by Ms. Sherman, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Passes unanimously, Agenda Bill 17040, Policy Governing Water and Sewer Service.
It's me again, and I apologize for losing your interest, so we're going to move quickly through this one. Back in 2007, council approved a policy that basically limited our involvement in upkeep of and ownership of private utilities on private lots, especially commercial lots. The idea is being unless there is a significant benefit to the city and the city system, we're not going to run fire lines all the way through your project, you're going to have to do that, you're going to have to own them, you're going to have to take care of them, because they're benefiting primarily your facility, nobody else, so it's not really a public interest now. Obviously, there are cases where that may not be the case, and we may want to be one of the ones that run a line through somebody's development. But in, in effect, what we did in that policy is we agreed that if it's going to go through a developer's property, they'll most likely be owning it. So, Whitman Crossing Number Two is a project that I'll be getting to in just a minute, this is the one just to the north of Home Depot. Kind of triggered a review of this because we're just making it a little bit more general, and there are fairly simple changes, but because it's a policy, thought it made sense to come back to council, make sure you have that policy in your agenda packet, and I have not repeated it up here, but I just wanted to go over a few of the things that have changed or been clarified. Here's a policy statement, basically, that the city will not own public infrastructure within private developments as a normal service unless the infrastructure provides a public benefit, as is determined by the Public Works Director. Again, that gives our Public Works Director, Paul Hartwig, the opportunity, when we're reviewing plans, to decide, you know what? This is just for you, you guys are going to have to pay for it, we're going to make sure that we have the valves in the right place to indicate where it starts, where the city stops, and your line starts. So the proposed updates are pretty straightforward, we're just clarifying that the ownership of water isolation valves are at the property line. So, the way we do this is that a water line goes from the right of way in our street and goes up into somebody's development, we need a legal marker for where we end and they start, and that's a valve. So we're just stating it'll be at the property line, and that's where we'll be putting the valves on the planter here. That's where you've got to stick your valve, that's where we end, and the developer starts. Allows for establishing agreement and obligation using means other than formal CCRs among multiple parties. CCRs are agreements, conditions, everybody, I believe, understands what CCRs are, between the property owners that govern how they interact among each other. We used to require that when you had a development, you had to have a formal CCR agreement, right, recorded with the county in order for you to proceed forward with your project. There's other ways to do that, there are just agreements between parties, sometimes it's just a single property owner, so you don't really need a CCR. So we've just said that it establishes for other means besides a formal CCR, okay? Gives us a little bit more flexibility in dealing with our developers. It clarifies the rights and responsibilities with regard to maintenance and operation of fire hydrants, as to who can flush them, when they can flush them, who's responsible, whether we can get in and look at them, and so forth. Our fire department still uses those facilities, they still make sure the facilities work, and so we clarified some of that language as well. In your agenda packet, you'll see the areas that we changed or underlined, so it should be pretty clear. And then finally, we did the same thing with, we can't really put valves in sewer lines, that would not be appropriate, in fact, it'd be downright unpopular. So, what we do instead is we are stating here that the point of ownership starts at the manhole, in the right of way. So effectively, and this has been the way it's been for years, here and across Washington, that you own your sewer line, your sewer service, all the way to the city main, even though it's in the right of way. So unlike a water line where it stops being the private person and starts becoming public as soon as it gets in the right of way, your sewer line all the way in to that manhole is at property owners, okay? I think there is some movement across the state to maybe relook at that, but right now, that's the way it stands. Okay, so we're just clarifying that as well. Pretty straightforward, are there any questions on that, or?
So, do you have a situation that's kind of lending to this change?
Yes, it's the next Agenda Bill.
Can you kind of just give me a synopsis of what's going on?
Really, really, the changes were just because the original language that we looked at, we realized it wasn't as clear as we wanted it to be, so there are clarifications. And in this case, for example, the CCRs, it's just one horn, so why would he do a CCR with himself? It didn't make a lot of sense. Instead, he's doing a maintenance agreement, which we'll show in the next Agenda Bill, with the city, the obligation to take care of those facilities.
Ms. Selby?
This is a bit of a technical point, but I didn't see on the Agenda Bill that the fire department signed up on this. Are you guys good with these fixtures? It has to do with the fire department getting into sewer. I was more worried about the fire hydrant part.
The fire hydrant, we currently have private fire hydrants, green tanks.
And I'm not sure there's something that we can do about this, but as I discovered when my sewer line was broken, your insurance company only covers up to your property line. So if it breaks between the property line and the main.
It's the property owner, yeah.
It's the property owner with no ability for the insurance company to.
It works.
As the owners. It's what you've been asking.
It's true.
That's probably why we hear Romans from time to time about changing that statewide.
Well, it seems to me that the logical thing to do would be to change the insurance policies. Since no one knows about it until it happens to them.
And it doesn't happen that frequently, yeah.
I should write the insurance commission, I suppose.
Other questions or discussion? Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the updated policy governing water and sewer service departments on private roads and private buildings.
I'll second.
Moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Mr. Cleveland, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign? Passes unanimously. Agenda Bill 17041. Mr. Gordon?
Thank you, Mayor, we are two-thirds of the way through, only two more to go. I, this one's related to what we just talked about, so hopefully, you'll get an idea of how we apply this. You look up here, this is C Street, this is Myra Road, and this is what we call Whitman Crossing, at least I do, Number Two Development. If you recall, Whitman Crossing was also the name that we used for the Costco development years ago, so there's a little confusion. If you see the number two there, it's just because referring to, there's a lot of land here. So, this whole facility here, they're sharing a road through this area here, this is the old Oil Can Henry, I believe they're valving now, I think they've changed their providing company. And this is Banner Bank. So what you're going to see next is going to be just the superposition of the development. Here's the road over here going up towards Oil Can Henry, Home Depot's down here, Banner Bank's here. And here's the water line going from our water line all the way up through the development, serving the fire hydrant here, and I believe there's another fire hydrant here within the development. The reason we have this fire line going through here, and there's another water line here going through for domestic water, and that's Green Tank. And we initially requested that the developer request Green Tank, allow us to serve them all off one line, and they refused. So now we have two water lines through here, and our primary, sole concern really is supplying fire supplies, that water line. So this agreement that is in your agenda packet covers that. It also covers the sewer line that serves the area up here, okay? Allows us the opportunity to get in there and TV it, make sure that they're not having problems that are causing us problems, and also is an assistance to them. But again, they're responsible to maintain sewer all the way up through their development, and you can see, depending on how they routed their sewer, it could get kind of pricey, depending on what parts were to fail in the future. You know, they have to rip up curb and rip up the asphalt, and so that's not something we really want to do, since it's really just a service line through this, this particular development. Are there any questions on that?
The water, our water lines, now, if I understand the conversation in the past, these businesses, if they were to locate there, they need to have our throughput for their fire suppression within their buildings, is that, is that still the case?
Green Tank does not have the storage capacity, so if they have a fire, they, they just don't have the reserves to allow the water to keep flowing to put out the fire. don't have the reserves to allow the water to keep flowing to put out the fire. So that's where we come in, we have the storage. So we have both the flow required, as well as the.
As the reserve.
To our reserve.
Okay.
Yeah, fire line. Yeah, okay. I should also mention that this particular development has one, two, three, four different addresses, and when we first started the agreement process, we were just referring to this lot by parcel lot number. But because it has the extra, and I'll let John jump in if I confuse this, because we have the extra addresses, it makes more sense, and it's a tighter agreement if we give it an actual formal legal description. So they've already signed the agreement, we're going to have them go back, we've added a legal description that fits this property, we're going to have them initial that, so it ties it down to that particular parcel. The concern, I think, is in the future, if they were to subdivide this or that they had different addresses, there may be a question as to who has to do what. Well, it's one whole parcel responsible for the full maintenance of those facilities. So we're just, it's kind of a technical thing, but it's part of what is on your recommended action. Is that it? Okay, thanks.
Well, Robert, I'll add, if there were ever a division, a legal division, because of how we described it, the agreement will follow even if newly created parcel, section.
So I'm brought to the land, I mean, it's.
Ms. Selby.
Does it matter that they didn't talk the notary rate? They left out the, notary didn't say that blank came and talked to them. Oh, hey, that's what you do.
We may have to have them resign it. I don't know.
Yeah.
I'll defer to somebody with a lot of great.
No, you can take a half-day notary class in the bathroom.
Good point.
Other questions?
I'm sorry, Mayor. I was just going to say, these typically wouldn't come before, except for the R agreements, and so that's why.
Seeing none, is there a motion?
I move that we authorize the Public Works Director to sign and execute Whitman Crossing Number Two Water Line Sewer Service Maintenance Agreement, subject to developer acknowledgement of legal description and personal information.
It's been seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes unanimously. Moving right along. 17042.
So last one, I think next time we may have to intersperse whatever agenda bills I have with somebody else, but we'll give it a shot. Well, Number Two, if you recall, we are kind of in the midst of a water well crisis. We have one well, in fact, I just had engagement with DOH today on that a little bit. We're moving that well with their assistance down across Highway 11, right?
That's my well.
Sorry about that.
Good.
You may be able, maybe you could buy land next to them. In any case, that well's being moved, and well Number Two is having some hiccups, it's the one that's jumping up and down off of its pad, and we are in the process of requesting extra funding if we can prove that we have a major issue from the legislature directly. So we're not talking about a grant, we're talking about a legislative funding, written into the bills, and we would just get to fix this. That's what we want to do. We think there's a problem. We want to, we need to prove that, though, it's pretty hard to go to a legislator and say, you know what, we would like $2 million to move well. Well, why? Well, because we think it's broken, so this particular study, okay, and this is fast track, originally, we're going to have these, this study completed by the end of March, but we need to get this information before our legislature moves out of session or moves out of that point where they're actually considering bills. We have a very tight timeframe, we may not even meet it, but what we've done in this particular contract is we've really pushed to be able to get that information, and if it's what we think it is, get to the legislature and see if we can do some last-minute lobbying, and maybe even if we don't get it this time, we're set well for next time. So that's kind of the idea. Just, this is one of the old visuals we used to use when we were talking about moving well Number One down here to the CCF site. The well Number Two, this in yellow, is the one we're talking about up on Fourth Street that is struggling. Okay. The total contract, I should go back to that, the total contract is just shy of $40,000. We budgeted originally $50,000 for this contract. The $36,000 includes 10% contingency on top of what they told us that they thought they were going to spend as a part of this contract. There's also some options in there that we may or may not exercise, if any part of the contract allows for them to produce fancy presentations that we can take to the legislature, and also the ability to actually present that for us, and we may or may not do those things. So this is the top end of what we'd expect to spend, it's quite a bit underwet. We originally budgeted. Here's the legislative calendar coming up, and I just wanted to show you again, this is all due March 6th, the contract, the basic results that we're asking for, the assessment, and March 8th is the last day to consider or pass bills in the House of Origin. So it's pretty tight. We may not make that date in terms of good data, write a bail to them, that makes a difference, but we certainly want to take a shot at it. What we're asking for in our legislative request is $900,000 for well Number One, and if we have a problem, and we think we do, as a result of this study, another $2 million, okay? When you get to the legislative level, and Harvey, correct me if I'm wrong, but you want to ask for big chunks, you don't want to ask for little pieces because they don't deal in little pieces, so we're asking for a pretty big chunk.
Anything less than a billion dollars is budget dust.
That's right, that's right. So we're asking for, what would you call it, budget chunks?
Meh.
Something like.
A million here, a million there, you're talking.
A few pieces.
Real.
So anyway, so before you is the approval of this particular contract. Keller Associates, the same folks that are doing the oversight of our cars project, came in with a very strong proposal, and on account of that, and they have a very strong team, including some geologists, even some local geologists out of Whitman College that are on their team, so they have a pretty sophisticated group of people looking at this, and we'd like to get them on board as soon as possible, and they're going to turn this around very quickly, so our recommendation would be to approve this particular contract.
Do we still have a lobbyist that we've contracted with to do our work for us up there in Olympia?
Dave Mastin used to be our lobbyist, but he was tapped for, do you remember what position?
The short answer is yes.
Okay.
We have a shared lobbyist with the Port of Walla Walla and the City of Walla Walla, whose name escapes me tonight.
Me, too. So.
It's not Dave Mastin anymore?
No.
No.
No. He.
He accepted a position in the, I don't know if it was, I want to say something with education, but I don't.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Ms. Selby.
Have we been talking to our representatives and senators about the fact that we are working on this and sort of have a placeholder in with them, so they, we don't want to blindside our local representatives?
That's one of the tasks that Mr. Rizetella's doing this week. Talked with Mr. Jenkins today, was talking with the, our senator and representative, we were talking with Marine and the other rep on Thursday.
Great.
With that, basically, $3 million-esque. Do you have a cushion built into this a little?
10%.
10%, yeah.
Yeah, it's not a lot, but really, the idea here is just give us a yea or nay, is this a viable well in the future, or can we fix it, or should we just get out of there?
Make a motion? You may. Okay. I move that we approve Agenda Bill ending on 042 to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Keller Associates for well Number Two, deflection evaluation service.
Second.
It's been moved, it's seconded, but is there any further discussion?
I just have a quick question, hopefully quick. What kind of daily question are they doing exactly?
They're crawling under the concrete piece, and I think one of our guys, I don't know if this is right, estimated it at 21 tons or something with the well on it, and they're going to see why it's going up and down, they're going to try and put a fiber optic camera down the well casing, if it's small enough, they can only get something down this big, so they think they can do it. They're going to look at the alignment of the wells in the valley. Right now, we have three wells seeing the same kinds of issues, not just ours, but also some of the other water districts, they all kind of line up. And in fact, that was one of the questions the geologist had. So they're going to do the big picture look, and they may end up also taking survey shots because if we're getting major subsidence, you're not going to, you're not going to sense that if you're just taking survey in a local location, you have to go out further to make sure you know what's going on. So we originally thought it was just the momentum driving it up into the side, we'll see if that's the case. They're wondering if that's really what's happening, so it's an enigma.
Kind of imagine like blowing a bear through a straw where it touches water, is there enough opening for it to escape without putting a lot of horse on the end? Sounds like quite a mystery.
Well, they'll be looking at the dynamics of the water column and what happens and whether or not that's causing the issue, so we'll see.
We've lost a well, size making a misalignment of, not related.
This one also has a misalignment, our dog leg is maybe the preferred term to use. So, and again, this well lines up with well Number One, lines up with, is it 14 or one of the other ones out there lines up, you have a picture on the map that shows they're all pretty much along the same alignment.
Interesting.
So, you know, it's a good possibility that there's been some, you know, tectonic plate movement or something, that's why the geologist will be involved, take a look at that.
And one or two are only a block or block and a half away from each other.
Fourth and Sixth Street.
Further questions or comments? So we've had a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes unanimously. We've withdrawn Agenda Bill 1743 at the request of Columbia Rural Electric, there being no.